Okay, let's get started for record. This is joint public hearing for a proposed renewal of a major source operating permit and proposed renewal of a municipal solid waste landfill permit for Stone Throw landfill. Today is November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, is six thirty P. M. We're at the Tallahassee City Hall at three Freeman Avenue, Tallahassee, Alabama, three six zero seven eight. Hi, my name is Tom Burks. Good evening, welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. I am the designated hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding these proposed permit actions. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's joint hearing for the following proposed permit actions for the Stone Throw landfill located near thirteen zero three Washington Boulevard, Tallahassee, Alabama, three six zero seven eight. Point one, the proposed renewal of a major source operating permit, MSOP, permit number two zero five dash zero zero one five for the municipal solid waste landfill, and the point two, proposed renewal of municipal solid waste landfill permit number sixty-two dash eleven. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with opportunity to present oral testimony on the proposed permit actions. In addition to oral testimony, the department will also consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. Department has requested your comments, and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On October ninth, two thousand twenty-four, notice of the date, time, and place and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individual individuals and organizations who have previously requested advance notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and email distribution list will be entered into the record of these proceedings. Copy of the public notice, permit application, preliminary determination, and draft permit have been made available for inspection by the public at the offices of the department at fourteen hundred Coliseum Boulevard, Montgomery, as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public, and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. Lengthy statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summary of such statements may be presented orally. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making permit decisions and must base determinations only on whether the permanent applicant has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to A.D.M. by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department staff to clarify points and to better develop an understanding of what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum as in a question and answer session. The hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments so that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit application. However, you may post a comment in the form of a question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit actions. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have the written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officers tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those represented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration of the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit actions and develop responses to comments for the proposed permits. The hearing record, final permit determinations, and responses to comments will be posted in the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop the transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video to be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now, let's move on to the purpose of the hearing, which is the receipt of public comments. Though order of appearance, a person's giving testimony will be as follows. First, representatives of the department's air division and land division, and then the members of the public who have submitted comments. Okay, I now recognize Mr. Robert Gill to present a statement on behalf of the department's air division. Mr. Gill.
Good evening. My name is John Robert Gill, and I am with the air division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. I am here to present a statement on behalf of the department concerning the proposed renewal issuance of Tallahassee Waste Disposal Center Incorporated's Major Source Operating Permit Number two zero five zero zero one five for the Stone Throw landfill. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Air Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's air pollution control regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal air pollution control regulations. The department is proposing issuance of Tallahassee Waste Disposal Center Incorporated's Major Source Operating Permit Number two zero five dash zero zero one five for the Stone Throw landfill. The Stone Throw landfill is a facility that handles municipal solid waste. The facility is currently subject to new source performance standards requirements found in forty CFR Part sixty, Subpart XXX, and National Emissions Standards for Hazardous Air Pollutants requirements found in forty CFR sixty-three, Subpart AAAA, which came into effect in March of two thousand twenty-one. Both of these rules require landfill gas to be collected and controlled, as well as ongoing monitoring and reporting of emissions, and also require the facility to maintain a major source operating permit. The applicable regulatory requirements are addressed in the Statement of Basis and Proposed Major Source Operating Permit Number two zero five dash zero zero one five, made available to the public on October ninth, two thousand twenty-four, as required by Title V of the Clean Air Act. A major source operating permit is intended to consolidate existing air pollution control requirements and does not authorize new sources of pollution or increases in emissions from existing sources. Compliance with the requirements of this permit will not result in violations of applicable air quality standards that were designed to protect human health and the environment. Before a decision is made on whether the renewal of Major Source Operating Permit Number two zero five dash zero zero one five is to be issued, the department will review and respond to any written comments received during the public comment period and comments submitted during this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. I now recognize Hunter Baker to present a statement on behalf of the department's land division.
Good evening. My name is Hunter Baker, with the land division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. We thank you for your participation in the permitting process for the Stone Throw landfill, permit number sixty-two dash eleven. HH&amp;T Incorporated, on behalf of Tallahassee Waste Disposal Center Incorporated, has submitted to A.D.M. an application to renew the solid waste disposal facility permit for the Stone Throw landfill, permit number sixty-two dash eleven. Stone Throw landfill is located in Sections twenty-six and twenty-seven, Township eighteen North, Range twenty-two East, in Tallapoosa County, Alabama. The permitted facility consists of one hundred and seventy-five point three nine acres, with one hundred and twenty-four point five seven acres permitted for municipal solid waste disposal operations, and five point eight acres permitted for construction and demolition waste disposal operations. The waste range for the Stone Throw landfill would remain non-hazardous solid waste, non-infectious petrifiable and non-petrifiable wastes, including but not limited to household garbage, commercial waste, industrial waste, construction and demolition debris, sludge from wastewater treatment plants, and other similar type materials. Special waste approved by A.D.M. may also be accepted. The service area for the Stone Throw landfill would remain all counties in the state of Alabama, and Harris, Muskogee, and Troop Counties in the state of Georgia. The maximum average daily volume of waste disposed at the Stone Throw landfill would remain fifteen hundred tons per day. All approved, previously approved variances and special conditions were requested and would be granted in the renewed permit. All other permitted conditions would remain the same. Based on our review of the permit application, the department has made a preliminary determination that the proposed permit renewal would be in compliance with applicable state and federal solid waste disposal requirements, and thus protective of public health and the environment. The proposed permit includes the following conditions. Upon renewal, the permit will be valid for a ten-year period. The permittee would maintain a composite liner as described in the permit and the permit application, including the liché collection system. The permittee would conduct groundwater monitoring semi-annually. The permittee would conduct explosive gas monitoring quarterly. The permittee would maintain the integrity of the final cover system throughout the life of the permit and post-closure period. The permittee would at all times properly operate and maintain the facility and all systems in accordance with the application and the permit. The permittee would obtain the approval of A.D.M. for any change or modification to the facility or a system which might otherwise result in non-compliance with the permit or A.D.M.'s administrative cover. Purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide an opportunity to receive public comment regarding the application of proposed permit. The department welcomes your input to this process and will consider all technical comments prior to making a final decision concerning the issues of this permit, and will develop the response to comments, which will become part of the public record and be posted under the department's e-file system. And thank you again for participating in this hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker. We will now proceed to the receipt of comments from members of the public. As indicated in the public notice for this hearing, oral testimony for each registered speaker is limited to seven minutes. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in a seven-minute timeframe, please use your time for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing for placement in the record. First, I recognize Ms. Phyllis, and I want to say, Gosa, please step up.
Please step up, and to microphone. Clearly state your name, and the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure accurate record of your attention when it can be recorded. Please also remember, this is not a question and answer session. Go ahead.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank A.D.M. for this opportunity. I also want to thank A.D.M. for the change in the procedure that was done here tonight to give us an opportunity to have a preliminary opportunity to speak with each division. Okay, to my point, since two thousand, I'm Phyllis Washington Gosa. Since two thousand and three, I have in some way raised my voice in opposition to the current landfill in the Ashes Bar Smith community. Each time my comments were responded to with rhetoric and explanations that have never addressed the human impacts or our natural resources, that being air, water, and soil, which ultimately has caused health issues for some. In my opinion, the assaults and impacts after thirty-seven years are now visible. The contour and layout of the land have been permanently changed. The population is probably less than one hundred and fifty now, and the personal land loss is obvious. The hearings have never had an impact on the consistent approval of requests or modifications and renewals. History now shows that the hearings are a fulfillment of a bureaucratic and legal requirement that does not address the citizen's quality of life or civil rights to have a clean and healthy environment. Twenty-one years post the plan designed for Washington Boulevard to be relocated through the middle of my family's property, my request is still that the renewal permit request be denied, and the Tallapoosa County Commission reverse its nineteen-nineties decision to commit five hundred acres of land in our community to a regional landfill. It is my opinion that even though for twenty-one years that I've been showing up here for these hearings, the one thing has always been stated to us that a preliminary finding has been made that the permittee has already met the qualifications for the renewal, and that you will only, we should only address technical issues. I consider any impact on land, water, and air is a technical issue. So the issue then revolves around what does the permittee do to make sure that the soil stays within its boundaries, its water stays within its boundary, and the air stays within its boundary? Also, that have, at this point, caused tremendous impact on our lives. Also, land loss has caused our community to be almost nonexistent. The only last public entity that we had in our community was our church, and it is now shuttered. So we are a community of people that are paying taxes, and only thing that affects our environment is a business that was designed, apparently, to do what it has done, and that is to displace us and make the entire region the landfill. Again, I want to thank it is much different than before. I don't expect anything different than the outcome that we always had, and that is, we show up, give our concerns, and we're now in cell number seven, eight, or nine, and it continues with five additional, what is it, one hundred and seventy-five acres that's been approved, and a hundred and twenty-five that's been permitted. Even though, when this started, there were concerns about water, wetlands, the inability for that soil in that area to be conducive to a landfill, all of those things that should have raised an issue, that should have been a technical issue, even the people who cited it. And by the way, in two thousand and three, EPA told A.D.M., there's nothing in state statutes that requires you all not to evaluate the six citing requirements that does address the human health of our community. I thank you all, you've been very kind, thank you.
Ms. Gosa, I have a quick question for you. You put out your address that you live in the summer, Alabama, in Central.
That's correct.
Did you used to have, did you live here and have ties to here?
I absolutely do.
I appreciate you coming, and I know it's a long ways to come.
Thank you. I speak for my family, both locally and those that are not, no longer here, who desire to come back here, but because of this situation, we are no longer able to locate and enjoy the land that's been in my family since the eighteen-seventies. My grandfather, my great-grandfather, was initial one to come, and those, I am the fourth generation. My children are the fifth, my grandchildren are the sixth, and we will probably never have, they will not have an opportunity to come back and enjoy what I enjoyed as a child. Thank you.
Thank you. I now recognize Mr. James Pearson. Please step up to microphone.
My name is James Pearson, and I'm a property owner on twenty-three eighty-six Washington I just want to say that I don't agree that the landfill should have permit, maybe on certain condition. But I'm going to quote Ronald Reagan a long time ago. He said, "After a while, we're going to have a rocket that we can shoot it, and we can call it back." Now, a rocket is something dangerous. The landfill is something dangerous. The landfill done shot a rocket out in that community, and they can't call it back. It destroyed. So I was talking to some of the owners, representatives at the table a while ago, and they said, "We just monitor the landfill area, the one hundred and seventy-five acres of wealth they got. You need to monitor down the road, because if I turn my cows loose, and they get over in the landfill, I'm liable. They're going to turn that liché loose. It's on our property and our life. They need to monitor down the road. But if they monitor down the road, they're going to condemn themselves, because they're going to find that they're not doing a good job as they say they're doing. Ain't no way possible that they can control that liché and chemicals from that landfill. It don't exist. But what they can do is to slow it down, you know what I'm saying? The best they can, because you got to have a landfill somewhere. If they close it down, they're going to have to go somewhere else and do to other people the same way that they doing us. What I'm saying is I want them to pay me for my property, and let me go and about my business, and they do what they want to do. That's what I want them to do. Because I can't run my business, I got my gravel pit over there, who want to buy dirt for their gravels for their driveway that contaminated, that come from a landfill, and they go to a landfill. So, condition, is that they need to pay me and do what they want to do with their property, and let y'all aim, whoever, the environmental people, control it the best they can. You can't call it back. It being released. It dangerous. That demolition equipment, disposal, have sulfur in it, I'm allergic to sulfur. I can't work at my garden. I can't, you know what I'm saying? The landfill is dangerous. That methane gas, bad on your eyes, caloric. You see what I'm saying? It dangerous. It's not safe. But maybe one day, down the line, that they may come up with something that stops it, you know what I'm saying? I do more to stop it. Like insulin for diabetes or stuff like that, make them find something else. But right now, it's not. No matter what they do, they cannot call that stuff back from that landfill, from our property, from our life. They can't call the people that done die. And scientists don't prove that elements, we done got brochure, that come from that landfill, cause all these diseases and illnesses, and I got all of them. So, condition, my condition, no. If they want paint, they do what they want to do, other than that, no. No, they don't need to be over there, they need to close it down. If they ain't got the money, they need to go borrow, or whatever they got to do. But no, that's what I say. Everybody got a question? No. I tell you, the people back there a while ago, was in club business, lounge business. The EPA don't be old enough to not monitor them. Signing up, putting application for wine license, I went and I start selling beer, liquor, wine, and everything with my beer license. Because you know why? They don't, they come when they get ready. You see what I'm saying? And that's the same way about the people that I was talking to, they come when they get ready and do what they want to do. And then they may get paid off, while they come and close their eyes. You see what I'm saying? Pay me, let me go, and they do what they want to do. And I got people with me that agree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Yes, sir.
And now recognize Mr. Anthony Smith. Please go for you. Thank you, sir. Now recognize Mr. Willie Smith.
Good evening. My name is Willie Smith, Jr., resident of Ashes Bar Road. I'm here as a spokesperson for the community. I was born and raised in Ashes Bar community, property one mile from the landfill. I lived from nineteen eighty-four, joined the military. When I left that community, it was a prosperous community, full of life, full of gardening, full of livestock. But when I returned, none of that existed. We was told that we could not eat of the land, drink the water of the land. So that was a problem for me, because just like me, amongst a lot of other people in that community, joined the military, we expected to come back home to fully retire and raise our families. Like often, when people leave here, they leave something to their families. But what do we have to leave? We don't have anything to leave. We can't say, okay, well, we're leaving this livestock to you to raise this farm. Can't do it. But what I do know, we have to speak facts, and I'm speaking facts tonight. The cancer rate in our community have increased tremendously. Just this year alone, we have lost ten people throughout our community, from the Ashes Bar to the Wall Street, Old Heights community, ten. Not to mention that several families have been wiped out completely that live a quarter of a mile from the landfill. Families, not one, not two, the entire families. Not to mention the heart attacks, the health issues that people are dealing with, unknown type of rashes, kids born deformed, kids born different types of respiratory problems, which we all suffering from now. You only have approximately two elderly people, like on Ashes Bar Road community, that's my mother and Ms. Turner, which one is eighty-seven, I believe the other one is ninety-two, but the rest is gone. But every time we come here, we talk, we tell y'all what's going on, but this ain't when no apartment been issued. We have lost sixty percent of our community since it's been there. I guess when you all give them another permit, the other forty be gone, and then what going to happen then? They're going to control everything with Ashes Bar and Washington Boulevard. But we are tired. We are tired. We are in a predominant black community, and they chose that area because of that fact. We don't have a landfill on Lake Mar. We don't have a landmark up there at Wind Creek. We have it here in our black community. Well, they felt like people was uneducated, didn't know a lot, but guess what? We're now educated. So you just can't come and run over us anymore. We're not going to stand for it, like Mr. Burton said before. We have lost out on business opportunity. I have lost out on business opportunity, which have the best drinking water in Tallapoosa County. I see a lot of people making a lot of money out of bottled water, but guess what? I can't sell mine. I can't even sell my property. Bottle of water is one of the number one seller throughout the world. You go to the airport, you're going to pay seven dollars and fifty cent for a bottle of water. But guess what I'm making out of mine? Nothing. But you go to Superfood, that's what we have to rely on, since the landfill there, we've been afraid to drink the water. We've been afraid to bathe with the water. So that's why they put the water in our community, ran city water, covered up our wells without our permission. But guess what? You left a few uncovered. And I'm seeking justice for everybody in our entire community. And I thank y'all for coming, but I pray that y'all do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Now recognize Regina Murphy.
My name is Regina Murphy, and I'm fifty-one years old.
My name's Regina Murphy, and I'm 51. I was born and raised on Ashurst Bar Road. I have seen so much bad happen in that place since the landfill. Me, myself, I have health issue after health issue. A lot of it, to this day, in December of 2021, I was diagnosed with a form of cancer that is rare. My specialist still trying to figure out how I got it. They went all the way to trying to find out, have I ever been a smoker, been around smoke, did any tobacco? Nothing. Until I mess around and see it where I live and what I live by. She is puzzled and troubled. Her main thing was me to get with the cancer center to find out and do more checking into that, because it was unreal. Unreal. And I'm glad I'm still here to let y'all know. Ashurst Bar Road and that Smith community, it has a face. It's not just pine trees, pecan trees, oak trees. Faces. It has a face. Human faces, human bodies live there. And if y'all cannot understand that, then I don't know what else to say. Everybody's there, because that's where they want to be. That's my granddaddy, my mama's daddy place. We all there because we want to be. We love that place. It's family property. I'm in the spot I chose when I was a teenager, sitting in my bedroom in the family house. I'm in that spot, and I love it, raising my daughter there. My daughter, me and her, she has a rare brain disease just like me. They still don't know, because they say it's not hereditary. She has skin issues, just crazy skin issues. Still, dermatages, nobody can figure it out. It's just so much. Nieces, nephews, sisters, mom, neighbors, friends, everybody, family. But nothing's being done. We still having to live in it, experience this daily. And mine was in my nasal passageway. So where you think that will come from? It's breathing. It's from breathing something in the air right outside my front door. And that's not a good thing. That's not a good feeling, to be at home and not feel safe. That's the only place you're supposed to feel safe, is at home. But not in our neighborhood, it's not. But if y'all can consider for once to give that community a break, we need a break. We need the safety of our home and community back. And the only somebody can give that back to us is you all. Because no matter how many of us get up here and talk, as always, y'all going to give, and y'all going to give all-- I mean, all we can do is speak, because y'all still going to do what you want to do. But we asking y'all to please take in consideration of the faces of that community. Thank you all.
I now recognize Robert Jeter.
Good evening.
Ronald speaking to the microphone.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening. I just wanted to find-- Robert Jeter? Okay. I just wanted to ask and find out about what kind of study was done before this site was picked for the extension of the landfill on the groundwater? And how far downstream did they study the groundwater? My concern is that Macon County has the highest male prostate cancer rate in the state. And why is that? I know you're not going to answer questions now, so I'm just putting them on the record so that when they send out the response to all this, I'll get an answer to my questions. Now, the groundwater, is this on the aquifer or is it just a local groundwater? We posing in-- you posing in our water, which killing us. We cannot live without water. So, take in consideration how far downstream that the posing is getting in the water and what it's doing to not just this community, but the whole county, and probably further down than this. Thank you.
And I recognize Mr. Gwendolyn Teller Smith.
Good evening. My name is Gwendolyn Teller Smith. I'm the pastor of New Zion AME Zion Church, located at 3523 Ashurst Bar Road in what used to be beautiful Tallahassee, Alabama. That church sits 100 feet from the landfill. It's a church that original congregation was 35 when I came 20 years ago. That congregation is less than 21, and we are not able to worship in that structure. We decided to put on a community event, a fish fry. The community couldn't come for the stench from the landfill was so strong, they couldn't get the free fish we were giving away. We put a bouncy house on the church property, invited the children in the community to come and play. We had to take it down and ask them to pick it up because the scent was so strong, we could not continue the project. That block church sits on a hill. It is not in a valley. That block church, we were unable to baptize children in that church. We had to get bottled water for baptism. On Sunday morning, when we had services inside the structure, we ran two purifiers in order to worship within the sanctuary. We've collected samples from the air conditioning units and sent them to Yale University and Tuskegee University for assessment. We've been a hub for the Smith community out of love. Now, you want to expand the territory. We are struggling. We were struggling there, and we had to pack up to leave because we could not worship in our place of worship. Some of these very people, under the sound of my voice, families struggled to build that church, sacrificed for the blocks on which it sits, and we cannot worship in that building. When you think about a community, your community consists of stores and businesses and those things that make community. Church is a part of community. At 3523 Ashurst Bar Road, we're not able to support the community. We're concerned about the community meeting in that environment. We were tempted to have activities, inviting other people to the community. And they have just flat-out told us and told ADM that they're not coming because the stench is so strong. They're not coming, and they're not bringing their congregations. So what's a church without fellowship? I know the damage has already been done. But for the new permit, please take in consideration not just today's people, but the next generation that has to live in Smith community. The next generation that comes through that area and has to breathe that air. The next generation that has to use that water. It impacts everyone. Anyone that lives there, anyone that wants to visit there, anyone that has any connections with Tallahassee is starting to talk about that location. So, I encourage you to think about that and remember that little white church sitting up on the hill. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Do we have any more comments? Since there are no further registered speakers, please be obliged that unless otherwise notified, the public comment period will end at 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, November 21, 2024. All comments must be received at the offices of the Department in Montgomery by that time. After a consideration of all oral and written comments, the department will make its determinations regarding proposed permit action and prepare responses to all relevant comments received. Thank you for your participation this evening. This hearing is adjourned. Thank you all.